Good evening. It's Monday, December 14th, 2009, about 7:00 p.m. This evening, City Council is meeting in special session. We do have a forum with all members present. Special session agenda is a limited agenda. We move on to the ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 14409 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District, Governor Gosner.
I move adoption of ordinance 14409.
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance allows the city to enter into its annual contract with the local Soil and Water Conservation District. Basically it.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 14509 is an ordinance amending the fringe benefit package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
No, I guess, Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 14509.
Second.
14509, 14609 are both standard ordinances for paying and giving benefits to the non-union part of our workforce. And in this particular case, we use some general fund money to give much-needed salary increases for people. There's a map. Basically, that's what's going on here. There's one problem. I just talked to the mayor about it. We have inadequate coverage for interns in the current budget. We're hoping by the end of January, they'll move things around and cover that bit of a problem. I was going to insistently amend it next week, but I'm not going to now because I hate the president's dictum.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 14509 is adopted. Ordinance 14609 is an ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale, and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2010, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 14609.
Second.
As Member Bain explained, this is part of a package of two ordinances that authorizes a pay raise for our non-union personnel, beginning with the first pay period in January of 2010.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 14609 is adopted. Now on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 14709 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide. Member Bain?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to amend and then suspend 14709. Amend would be to add an emergency clause that would say that the materials needed for water, wastewater treatment, and other services and the salt is necessary to preserve the public health and safety of the city of Athens.
Further discussion on amendment only? All those in favor of the amendment as stated?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance 14709 has been amended and an emergency clause was added?
Yes. I'd like to move to consider 14709 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is we have a 13th of January or 14th of January date for bits on this material.
Further discussion on suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 147?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is being considered under suspension of council rules.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 14709.
Second.
Okay, 14709, as we mentioned last week, is an annual purchase of materials needed in various departments, water treatment, wastewater treatment, and Streets Department. And in the larger ordinance, you saw the breakdowns, quite a bit of money coming out of various funds to do the city's work.
Further discussion on adoption of 147? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 15009 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2010. Ordinance 15109 is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 15309 is an ordinance amending the 2009 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we consider ordinance 015309 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This ordinance moves some money from a capital expense line to a lease expense line in the code enforcement office. And it has to do with leasing computers for 2010. So it needs to be taken care of as soon as possible.
Further discussion on suspension only? Mayor Wile?
I believe the due date for this bill is actually December 20th, I was told. So that's why we're trying to expedite it. It's for next year, but they like it early.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 15309?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 15309?
Second.
For the reasons that the mayor just explained, a bill for computer leasing is due actually before the end of the year. This will carry the code office into the next year, 2010. This money was appropriated in a -- this amount of money was appropriated, it appears in the wrong line and needs to be moved.
Further discussion on adoption? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 153?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 15409 is an ordinance amending ordinance 11509, authorizing construction of key drive, East State Street access road, project number 240, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley?
Mr. President, I move that we consider this under suspension.
Second.
Reason for suspension?
This is for the timely processing of the authorization.
Yes. Further discussion on suspension of 154? All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is being considered under suspension.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 15409.
Second.
And this is to process the authorization component of this project on East State Street, the East State Street access road.
And again, this is money that we do get reimbursed from the organization. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 154?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Items number seven and eight on our agenda really are not to be considered under a special session, so we move on to item number nine, which is adjournment. Having addressed all items on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned. Moving on to the Planning and Development Committee. Committee Chair, Chris Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have basically one item of business, which I will quickly go through. It is an application for a use of a right-of-way for Anthony Farah.
Varian.
Varian, thank you. And it's for Six Mill Iron Street in Athens. He would like to put a picket fence up in front of his property. There's no curb or sidewalk, and people have been driving across the front yard. So this is to help reduce impact on his front yard. The application is complete. There has been no -- he has full support, it looks like, of all the adjacent property owners, and it's gone through city administration with all the Ts and Is dotted and crossed. I will bring this up at the beginning of the new year.
Any other comments? And maybe former council member Baum will have some comments to make.
I expect that since this front area will be a short fence.
Very good. On to Transportation and Utilities Committee.
You probably start a car proof though.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Just to emphasize, it really doesn't cover so much planning development, but once it does, I will have some boards and commission appointees come January, so just to let you aware. One possibly is in the Health Board, City County Health Board. The other one, of course, is that we have some vacancies in the Disabilities Commission, and we've had some people who are asking to be nominated, so I'll bring that up. And again, it falls in a realm of between finance, personnel, and planning and development.
Sure.
Okay.
Question for the mayor? Okay. Under Transportation and Utilities Committee, interesting merger? Yes.
Well, we had a joint meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Could we start with Andy Stone, who's going to present something that's not even on our agenda?
We have miscellaneous on our agenda.
I know, miscellaneous. This is really miscellaneous.
The all-encompassing miscellaneous?
I will, as he's walking up to the mic, I will say that I got an email about it this afternoon, and it seemed so odd that I thought I'd better ask. I asked Paula -- I sent Debbie to ask Paula, and we have Andy now to explain.
Paula asked me to be here this evening, ladies and gentlemen, in lieu of her, because she thought I could better explain the situation at hand. Over the past, I'd say perhaps four months, we've been working with a professor at Ohio University in the Chemical Engineering Department, Dr. Jerry Botte, or Bate, I think is how you pronounce her last name. But she's very advanced in a number of fields, has secured a lot of research dollars for the university. And she's written a proposal, which is a grant application to the U.S. Department of Energy, as well as the U.S. Department of Defense, for $2.5 million to do a pilot project for deriving energy from municipal wastewater. And the process, the long and short of the process, is that ammonia is an item in wastewater that, in some communities, has to be removed with the discharge permit that some communities have. We currently don't have that requirement to remove ammonia, but there's been talk at EPA for a decade that that's going to be levied on us at some point here in the future. But certainly, all the communities that discharge into the Great Lakes and a number of other bodies of water have to remove ammonia. Dr. Botte's come up with a process that she would like to test that involves by placing electrical charge to wastewater effluent at a certain point in your wastewater treatment process, which would remove hydrogen from the ammonia, basically break down the ammonium. And then hydrogen could then be used and pushed back into your wastewater plant as a fuel source for running a generator, heating your plant. So you're basically driving energy from your wastewater. And it wouldn't make sense typically if you didn't have to remove ammonia because you're using electricity to remove this hydrogen, but in situations where you have to remove ammonia anyway, it makes sense. Dr. Botte needs a laboratory, and she's approached me about using our wastewater plant as laboratory. And we sent a letter of support a couple of months ago, along with her application to Department of Defense and Department of Energy. In the meantime, Ohio University has gotten hold, like the, at the Ohio University President level, has gotten ahold of her proposal and sees this as a proposal that could attract a lot of attention from Senator Boivin, Senator Brown, and Congressman Wilson. And they would like to request through their Governmental Affairs Committee, or their Governmental Affairs person, Terry Geiger, to get this put into a federal appropriation directly, so that it gets directly marked and sent to our community to do this project. They think that, Ohio University, that is, Government Relations, thinks that we would more, she would be more likely to be funded if the city of Athens requested this federal appropriation as opposed to Ohio University, because it would show partnership, we're really the lab. We had a meeting today with Terry Geiger and Dr. Bate and a couple other folks at Ohio University, that is Paula and I. And one of the things that we shared was we certainly would be amiable to applying for or being the entity that requests this federal appropriation. But here recently, we've had a lot of headaches requesting on behalf of other entities for grant money or federal appropriations or what have you to flow through the administration for doing something else. The ordinance that you just passed here is one explanation or one example of that. And so what I shared with them was, we have $4.1 million in improvements to make to our wastewater treatment plant sometime here in the next three years. We're getting ready to retire a couple large notes, so we would have the funds available in sort of debt fund to borrow that $4.1 million. But I would really like to get a portion of that funded from a non-borrowed source. And what I would like to do is, in conjunction with this request, to our representatives in Congress to put a portion of those improvements, along with Dr. Bate's proposal, so that it reads as though perhaps $1.5 million of our improvements are in parcel to her request. So she asks for $2.5 million, we ask for $1.5 million, and we get a third of our improvements funded through this process. And I think it's viable, because it would make a lot of sense to do the work we need to do sometime in the next three years, at the same time that she would install this pilot contraption, basically, in our wastewater plant, because of the piping and the construction requirements, to make it part of the construction contract. So it makes a lot of sense to do that. I'm not asking for any legislation or any action by this body right now, but I wanted to bring it up, so that you all heard it in a public forum, so that two months from now, when we're in the final stages of requesting this from the various representatives to Congress, if legislation needs to be passed at the time, and they say, hey, you need to have some legislation, that you will have heard about it already. And I can get way down into the weeds, if you like, but I won't certainly do it tonight. But if any of you are interested, we can talk about wastewater all day. Exciting topic.
I think that would certainly be a subject for our committee.
He missed, he missed your warning.
Well, no, no, no problem. I don't have any authority on his committee assignment.
No, I, the one thing that I was concerned about is, would this lab be permanent? If, you know, let's say this is a two-year project, would she always be working here or would she not?
I don't think so. Certainly, if the process works, it's something that we'd want to continue. You know, removing ammonia from the waste stream is a pollutant, which, for a number of years, as I mentioned, EPA said that the ruling is going to come down, that our permit is going to require us to remove ammonia. If the process works and we can capture energy off of it, I would have no problem with it being permanent. But at the time, as I understand what she wants to do, it could be something that we could uninstall fairly easily. It would be a, it would be a process that would be installed between our primary and secondary clarifiers, that would just pull some effluent away from the mainstream and provide this electrical charge and pull the hydrogen off of it. And I think we could increase the size to run all the effluent through it. But, you know, all 4.8 million gallons a day that we treat on a regular basis, that's not quite that much, 3 million gallons a day that we treat on a regular basis, would probably be a reach too far in the beginning, but I don't think that it would have to be a permanent thing, and that's not what I'm offering.
It doesn't, I just wanted to know, the lab would be in the footprint of the existing office space?
It actually would be outside. I don't know that it would be inside the building. As I understand, the device that she would install would be some type of tank, and then there would be some electrical circuitry that would go through it, and then there would be some piping to capture the hydrogen and send it to a different part of the plant.
Yeah. Okay, well, this would be an earmark, right?
They asked that I don't use that term. Not even a confrontation with the term, but yes. If you call it a spade, a spade, and that's what it is.
That's what it is. It's an earmark. Okay, and then, one of the things I ask Paula to assure me is that, being a veteran of three different permutations of sludge treatment, that this would not in any way, shape, or form affect our future developments in that site, such as going to phosphate removal or something? Probably not.
No, no.
As you've described it, you know, because I didn't have a description, it wouldn't.
Right.
But sometimes, we've had a long and expensive history with best available technology.
Right, right, I understand.
Okay. Well, that's why Andy's here.
That was the word I was looking for, was expensive. But what are some of the hidden costs that we might, where, what's it going to cost the city, other than expanding grant funds?
Long-term, we have to look to see, I mean, say, for instance, her project is completely funded. That is to say, the research and the installation of the equipment is completely funded through the, through the federal appropriations process. Our upfront cost would be nothing other than our consultant, whoever we have to design our upgrades, having to incorporate the plans from any particular design firm that she would hire to incorporate, to do plans for this portion, incorporating those into our construction plans. At this point, I really don't see a cost, especially in order to, if we were asking for money towards our plan as well, our improvements that we have to do anyway. There is an electricity cost that goes into this, and we will pull hydrogen off of it, but whether or not the energy savings for the hydrogen that we pull off, the electricity that we put into it, balance out, I don't know. And that's what, basically, that's what she's studying. It's not a huge electricity cost in the grand scheme of things, and if you get to the point where they say you got to remove ammonia, then that's something we got to do anyway, so the cost is moved. But if we don't have to remove ammonia, and it's okay that we discharge it into the Hocking River right now, but we're putting electricity into our wastewater stream in order to pull off hydrogen, I can't say right now, and certainly until the research is done, that we won't have a net long-term expense, but I would think, you know, it'd be only a order of pennies compared to what we pay an electricity builder in a month for wastewater treatment. Okay, thank you.
I'm not managing this, you two are.
Oh, fine, yeah. And Andy, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, because I think the appropriation.
The mayor wants to speak up.
Thanks for coming in.
Sure.
The appropriation sounds like a good, good opportunity for the city.
If it happens.
If it happens. And is it's functioned at the university, and appropriations come through, it's a grant process, so to answer your question, would they have a begin and end date?
Right.
Wouldn't necessarily mean everything would be removed at the end of the grant, but it must have a, you know.
My understanding with the way the money, the way the money would flow, is that once it's appropriated into the federal spending bill, it would be given to some federal entity to administer. Potentially EPA, potentially Department of Agriculture, potentially Department of Energy. I'm familiar with dealing with EPA grants, not quite so familiar with dealing with Department of Energy or Department of Agriculture grants, but they all have their own nuances, but there will be some entity, it won't just be a check that shows up and we spend it. How much of that money do you have?
We have contingency plans for receiving less money than we get.
Right.
For dismantling and for other things that, look out for interest in other words.
Absolutely.
It's pretty.
One of the things that they ask is, put forward a minimum amount. Like, what is the, if they get a partial appropriation, how could we still function? And basically, at that point, I would pull out one component of our larger $4.1 million wastewater plant improvement project and say, this is something that could stand alone, and as a minimum, we'd like to give it. So we'll still get something out of it if they get lesser amounts, because I understand exactly what you're saying, to look out for interest.
In writing?
Right, absolutely.
And there, and it probably should be noted that Alahu worked on an earlier contract with Andy and other people that has some of the same area, although you said you didn't think we were going to have it.
I don't know. It's through the Ohio Department of Development. It's an energy efficiency grant, it was ARA funds specifically, we got it in in time. And it was for about $500,000, $400,000. I'd have to pull the paperwork to find out the exact amount, but it was about 10% of the cost of our larger wastewater treatment plant improvements, and specifically focused on upgrades necessary to improve energy efficiency of the plant, namely the HVAC system in the control building, the way that we deal with the effluent. The process right now has a larger 10-horsepower motor, we can replace it with a half-horsepower motor if we upgrade our effluent treatment. Lighting, high-efficiency lighting around the plant, and we asked for that through the Ohio Department of Development, extremely arduous grant application process, in a very, very, very tight window of time, so I'm not certain how well we got it all pulled together and turned in. One thing that they shared with me today is, we can't count ARA funds as local match for, you can't count federal money as local match for other federal money. So, that being said, we'll note, one way or the other, whether or not we get the Ohio Department of Development funding by the time they ask this federal appropriation.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
No problem.
Wait a minute. The boss wants to talk.
Andy, now, I met with Professor Botte, and she was putting a grant in, we put a letter of support. Is that still in process, do you know, that particular grant that she was looking at, or has that fallen by the wayside with this potential?
She indicated there was, the Department of Energy grant had fallen by the wayside.
Okay.
That they were still waiting on one, you know, spending bill, basically, which was the Department of Defense bill to go through. She didn't have a lot of high hope that it was going to be put into 2000, I suppose it would be this past fiscal year, that it would come out in that, but potentially it could. Same, same exact process, but it was lost next fiscal year.
And really, what she's trying to do is put this into a real-life situation. It's an experiment that works in the lab, engineering-wise, the next thing is to put it in real life, and this, you know, this is a university function, it's a city, and it's close enough that they could work, we could work to get into that function. And again, you'll be on top of it in terms of how it dovetails with whatever we do. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you.
Now, the next item is an authorization to extend the Lakefront contract. You might remember, under some of our previous discussions, we have a contract now with the Lakefront bus system, and that provides transportation between Athens and Columbus as part of an interim city rural grant. And we will be seeking a proposal for an additional route that will be between Athens and Cincinnati. And at that time, we will also need to renew the contract for Lakefront. And this is something that Mayor Wile, you mentioned last week, so we want to make sure it gets on the committee agenda now, and we have it.
Okay. Yes, essentially, this is, this is, we're trying for the grant for the Athens, Cincinnati, Athens-Columbus one, which really means it has to be re-applied for the Athens-Columbus, which is what we have. That means the Lakefront, which is expiring in December, they're amenable to an extension, but we just have to get authorization to extend it till the new, whoever picks up the new grant, whoever picks up the new routes. It could be Lakefront, it could be anybody else to be in position.
So we will need the authorization, then, to begin in December?
Well, again, they'll be going to operate for a while, for a little bit, but it's not that long. So I want to get this rolling as soon as possible.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Nysley, I just wanted to say that I actually had somebody come in to work today to tell me how excited they were about the possibility of getting this Cincinnati route stopping here. So we have one person who's going to use it occasionally.
Good to have the feedback. And we also asked Gordon Cooper, when he was at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting last Thursday, about the percentage, and I remember that being a question of council members last week, the percentage of students to, you know, permanent full-time resident population that's using the bus system. And Mr. Cooper estimated that it's probably a little bit over 50% student ridership.
That's all?
That's all. So we do have a citizen interest in there in that, in these routes.
I don't know if you ever watched the, when the bus system was next to Oasis there, you had a lot of the Amish coming in on the bus.
That's right.
So, you know, that, it doesn't represent just the students coming, using the bus system. It was always an interesting mix, them sitting in front of the Oasis and students on the bus.
Another update in the area of transportation is an item that Mr. Stone and also Mr. Ron Lucas have been working with, and that's uniform bus signage throughout the city, which was going to be a real improvement. And to work towards accomplishing that, they had a meeting with representatives from Athens Transit and Bus Service in the city of Athens. We have a number of different competing interests and such, but maybe we can get a unified system of bus stops.
Chris, I was in Paul's office for a different meeting with the university this past week, and they had an example of a sign that was about this big with all of them on it, and she took great umbrage to bring it down in size, because you could certainly still see all the different logos that they wished to have on it, no U seems to be on board with it, so I think they, that'll be moving forward.
Good, yeah, I think that'll be.
With smaller signs.
I think it'll be an improvement. And Andy, I think you had also made the suggestion of indicating nighttime routes, which I think will be a real help.
Right, and a lot of the services only stop at some locations at night, like when they do an uptown route for after bars close, or when bars are open, or what have you, to avoid drunk driving and such, and there's, we thought maybe we could put some sort of indication on the sign for if it's late night, only like a little moon sticker or something. it's late night, only like a little moon sticker or something like that.
To give you an update on the pedestrian bicycle plan, the, this is an update from our city planner, Paul Logue. We had a second meeting, which was held on November 12th, and which many of you attended. I think there were probably close to 30 people there to make comments, and it was a diverse audience, had had both pedestrians and bicyclists, who all had opinions, and it was great discussion. And we have focus areas from the meeting that we're looking at, Columbus Road, East State Street, West State Street, Stimson, Richland Avenue, West Union Street, Uptown Athens area, and the Bike Pass. And then we've now looking at three focus areas of high priority. We'll have a final draft plan for people to look at, and once again, more public comment, and that will be in late January. And Paul Logue and I will be arranging meetings with some of the different stakeholders to make sure we are meeting with neighborhood associations, also with uptown and business, uptown businesses, and the Chamber of Commerce to let them know. So if any of you have some other suggestions of people that we need to meet with or make sure we get the plan to, please let me know. The Richland 682 Improvement Project, I put this down as an agenda item tonight, because Mr. Stone has let us know that we will be needing authorization legislation for the construction and the construction engineering portion of that improvement. And we do have construction that we hope begins by March, and so the interest is to have this authorizing legislation for the construction and construction engineering component in place by February. Is that right? And do you have any other information to add?
I understand that because of the council session is over, and effectively, all legislation dies in the calendar year, I was hoping to get the readings on the appropriations and the authorization to begin construction started now, so that we didn't have to ask for suspension. But because the legislation all dies, I don't think we have that option, so I think, Mayor Nysley, was just bring that up, so that when we ask for suspension midway through January, in order to get the construction engineering and the construction appropriations and authorization in place, that everyone understands why. Because we're getting ready along those lines, while we're talking about this project, I'm working with the government channel at the moment to get about, probably, a 20 to 30-minute infomercial that's going to talk all about the project, final products, made its traffic during construction, a number of other things. It's going to be a great production, it should start running by Christmas, we're hoping, so you should be able to see that later. It may be something you'd want to show in session sometime, maybe not. Probably 20 minutes long, you don't want to extend it any more than you have to.
And I know we've also, we've already had a request from the senior council.
Right, certainly.
To see that and to.
And we'll be prepared for that. Chamber of Commerce, I'm going to the Chamber of Commerce right after the first of the year, and I'll share that with them, so there will be a number of people, interest groups that are interested in the way that we're building this, but on or about one month, you'll see they're moving, so.
Great. Councilmember Bain, the salt bin, did you want to discuss that?
I was going to do the other one. Salt bin is 80% new.
Well, that's true. We have a wonderful project that is jointly sponsored by several committees here, being Transportation and also Utilities, and we will, we're glad you're here, Andy, because you'll be able to probably tell us some more details about it, but we are ready to begin the rehabilitation of that salt bin that has been a concern, so that we have adequate storage for the salt supply for the city, for our streets, and that's the way it affects the streets. But then also, we have been concerned that we rehabilitate that storage area, so that it provides safe storage of the salt, so that there isn't runoff.
Right. The issue at hand is, in addition to being able to have an adequate supply to treat the streets all winter, in case we run into a situation like we did a couple of years ago, where there was a shortage, we couldn't get all the salt that we needed, we'd like to be able to have it on hand at the beginning of the year for a whole winter. We also have the problem of chlorides in the groundwater, and with our wellhead protection plan, the, our annual groundwater monitoring, we've gone through and identified where the concentration of chlorides are coming from, and there were really two critical locations that, when you map all of our groundwater, that we were getting in the chlorides. One was the Herald Avenue Storm Sewer, which was an old clay line, which was ditch charging our effluent from the Brine Lagoon, which is a byproduct of water treatment. And it was an old clay tile line leaked into the ground and contaminated the groundwater with chlorides. Not a big contaminant, not a big problem, but it's something you can't treat out, so it's something we needed to deal with. We did the Herald Avenue project this year, and it was a successful project, and so that should eliminate that source. The other source that we have is the salt bin at the City Service Garage compound, and this project should jointly, in addition to repair a 40-year-old facility that's falling down, we'll also, and provides adequate storage, will also protect the groundwater with this project. It's under design right now, and I'll request funding for construction as part of the 2010 budget.
Councilmember Paul?
How is the use of our sand going to, are we going to store sand? And is the sand mixed with the salt, is it a salt-sand mixture now that we're not going to be using ash? Has that gone into the thought process of this?
Right. Well, I've covered storage for that as well. Currently, and I actually have a picture on my phone right now, I was going to send to the mayor earlier today, we have, let me get this right, 300 tons of, we're really using what's called grit, which is a little larger than sand, it's because sand, when it's stored outside and it's rained on, it will freeze, and you won't be able to pick it up. So instead, we've got, it's really a very, very small pea gravel, just a little bit bigger than sand is what we're going to use in lieu of cinders. We purchased 300 tons of that here recently, it's on hand at the Service Garage compound, and we'll ensure that that has adequate storage space as well.
Thank you. Councilman Baccrune?
Is the new storage bin going to be at the same location?
Yes. The footprint will be a little larger, but it should be at the same location.
Thank you. Mayor Wile?
I would point out, we are going to be using, as Andy said, grit or sand. Of course, that has another, one of the problems. I talked to some of the street crew, and one of the concerns is clumping. When it gets wet, it doesn't fall apart as easy as the ash that we've been using. The other one is that it, that it doesn't break down as easily, and it will end up in a storm sewer, and that was another concern. We had our employee recognition luncheon, and I had a couple candid discussions with some of the street crew there on what they're worried about. The other thing is, if it doesn't wash down, it can create traction problems along the way, too, so there's pros and cons with doing everything, as you know, short of hibernating over the winter.
Okay, so I have one thing that I didn't get on here, but it's the Brine Lagoon we talked about last week, and on the first meeting in January, we'll have it on the agenda, to expend, authorizing the Public Works Department, now we know why I didn't want to talk, to expend the $150,000 that is already appropriate in the budget. And the salt lagoon was built in '83 or '04 or '05, it's a big bowl, we used to just send it out every time the softening process was finished, and then we have to let it out with a drip, which is one of our first EPA mandates. $150 is a good price, though. Thank you, Andy. And I think that's it. I think we'll be having both the Richland Avenue stuff and this on a meeting the first, second, and third weeks of January, and we'll get done in time for that one.
I think really, if you just had a emergency clause, the timing is fine for even three readings.
Yeah, we, I think you'd like to get more.
But either way, you know, the purpose is for people to become aware tonight, you've made everybody aware, and it's gone out, so.
Okay. That's it?
We are adjourned.